The Harris County Board of Commissioners meeting, this is September 6th of 2022. The order, Commissioner Andrews will listen and make decisions.
Dear everybody, thank you so much for your blessings. We thank you, Lord, for this beautiful county in which we live. Lord, we thank you for the children that we are going to recognize tonight, the joy that they bring to all of us, and how proud we are of them. We thank you for their good health and their ability to do what they do. We pray, Lord, that you would continue to bless them as they grow. And, Lord, let them grow into fine young men and women, to represent our county well and to represent you well. In the name of Jesus, we pray.
Amen. If you'd please join us for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands our nation, our God, and our people, with the great peace and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening is the approval of our minutes from our special call meeting, legislative dinner on August 9th of 2022, and also the minutes from our regular session on August 16th of 2022. Is there... We have a motion. I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? All those who vote for it, motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is a recognition of some of our Harris County Little League teams. And the first team that we'd like to recognize this evening is our 12-under baseball team. These young men were coached by Wayne Perkel, they had an assistant coach, Jeremy Johnson, Dustin Ogul. They were the district league champions with a 4-0 record, tournament held at the American Little League in Columbus. They're the Georgia State champions, a 4-1 record, tournament held at the Porterville Little League in York here in Georgia. And then they finished third in the Southeast Regional Tournament play with their record of 2-2 in Southeast Regional Park in Monroe, Robbins, Georgia. The young men on this team were William Brandon, William Demetri, Hayden Demetri, Riley Harper, Brody Johnson, Fisher Ogul, Jonathan Perkel, Tyson Sharp, Levi Stuck, Tucker Well, Carter Westmoreland, and Evan Lussey. Congratulations, young men. Thanks, because we've got certificates here that I'd like you to give to each of your players. And we'd also like to take a picture with y'all, now, if y'all could step back. Sounds good, guys. I'll come on step back real quick and see. This one again here. They're a Harris County 11-under baseball team. They're the district league champions with a 3-0 record, pitching a no hitter against the American Little League, defeating Northern Little League in the championship game. In state, they finished second with their record of 4-2, defeating Peachtree City in Porterville Little Leagues. Second year in a row finishing second in state play with an overall postseason record of 7-2. And these young men are Fuller Carver, Cabot Clark, Colton Clayton, Jacob Gilstrap, Luke Goody, Hudson Harper, Ty McCallum, Knox Nance, Sawyer Pete, Michael Rebus, Charlie Thomas, and Carson Vega. And Coach, we've got some certificates here. Hand these up to your players. And I'd also like to take a picture with y'all, so if you'll step back. Squeeze it in.
You were so proud, y'all. Proud.
All right, I appreciate cheese. One, two, three. Cheese. Thank you. softball team. Greg Allen was their general manager, Rick Beach was an assistant manager along with Kyle Newbauer and J.J. Seaman. And these young ladies were the district league champions, beating Pioneer Little League in two out of three games. They're the state tournament play in Monroe, Robbins, they placed third, defeating Toccoa Little League 7-3, and Bartow Little League 10-0. And the young ladies on this team were Kinsey Allen, Caitlin Allen, Athens Beach, Elizabeth Childs, Caroline Condon, Jake Durham, Langy Ellis, Cassidy Griffin, Carly Grace Jenkins, Mackenzie Newbauer, Addie Seaman, Kentley Spates, and Anzley Weaver. Congratulations, ladies. Y'all just step down there from the other side of the picture. A little more like a basketball team. Yeah. All right, y'all, three say cheese. One, two, three. Cheese. All right. Thank you all. This is the next group that we'd like to recognize this evening, and this is Harris County's 10-under softball team. Their head coach was Matt Carr, assistant coaches Lauren Reese and Adam Smith. These young ladies finished with an 8-1 record. They're the district league champions with a 2-0 record, state champions with a 4-0 record. They finished third in regionals, losing only one game to Florida, which was a single elimination. Impressive fact, after winning district, these girls won six games, scoring 78 runs and only allowing five runs. The young ladies on this team were Charlie Drottin, Ally Ray Estes, Belle Graham, Brynlee Harden, Hayden Smith, Alana Huckbee, Audrey Johnson, Harley Carr, Liza Price, Aubrey Reese, Ava Valdez, Cassidy Williams, Kylie Williamson. Congratulations, ladies. I'd like to pass out to the young ladies, and I'd like to take a picture of y'all, while I'm backing up my project, so you can see the picture. All right, all three say cheese. One, two, three. Cheese. Good job. And on to the next item on our list is appearance of citizens this evening. And the first citizen was Mr. Blake Offord. I do not think that Blake Offord is a citizen. The next citizen this evening is Miss Stacy Baker. Miss Baker.
I'm not sure if she remembered or not.
Okay. All right. Well, that was Baker. We will move on to Golden Business this evening. Number one business this evening is a request filing of application of Board of Commissioners to amend the amendments dealing with the UDC. The proposed Unified Development Code, UDC, was denied by the Board during the August 2nd, 2022 Commissioners Meeting. The Board discussed the UDC again on August 9th, 2022, and voted to take the denied UDC back through the public hearing process. The Board met on August 29th of 22 to discuss further revision of the UDC. Based on that meeting, the Board requested staff to place the proposed revisions on the September 6th of 2022 meeting agenda for formal consideration. Yet the proposed revisions are accepted. The June 1st, 2022 UDC will be updated with the accepted revisions incorporated into a text amendment application that's submitted to the Community Development Department prior to their September 12th application deadline. The Planning Commission will conduct a public hearing regarding the UDC and the Board accepting the revisions during their October 19th meeting and prepare a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. With the Planning Commission's recommendation, the Board of Commissioners will conduct a public hearing regarding the UDC and the Board accepting the revisions during their November 1st meeting. If the UDC and the revisions are approved, the UDC will go to effect on a date as determined by the Board of Commissioners. Are there any comments or questions?
No comments. Brian has updated the map that was brought to us and presented to us at the last meeting. When we saw this map at the previous meeting, I understood, perhaps it was only me that misunderstood, that all of the yellow spots and all of the lots that were 30 acres and less had been identified. And I had taken a picture of it, and when I got home, I'm looking at it, and I thought, my own less than 30-acre lots are not colored in yellow. So I called Brian, and he said, no, that was just a representation of it. And I said, well, you know, that doesn't help us know what would happen if we accepted this proposal, when we don't have a visual or a number of what, how many lots that would look like. So he has now identified all of the lots less than 30 acres, and as you can see, the map is much more yellow than it was the other night. So with this proposal of going to a third of the parcel, to allow a third of the parcel to be divided into three spots, you can see all the way down to two acres, how much land in the county would eventually possibly be in two-acre lots. And that is a whole lot more than we saw the other night. So when I first heard the proposal, I thought, well, this is a good compromise, and this is a place we could go. But after seeing how much of the county infected to go to thirds, I no longer can support that. But as I've thought about it, I thought, well, I could support going to half, being able to divide each of those into halves. So if you had a 10-acre lot, you could divide it into two fives, if it's ag land, which still gives you what we are requiring for rural residential, which is really what you're creating as rural residential. Now, many of those lots are less than 10 acres, I know. And they could be divided down to anything down to two acres somehow. But I would feel better if instead of saying, minor subdivision, minimum lot area, minimum lot size should be lesser of the zone, the district minimum lot, or a third, for it to make that a half. That way, anything 10 acres and above, it's a half. Or 10 acres and below, 10 acres would give you two fives. And then all of the smaller ones, they're rural residential even now, if they're less than 10 acres, that's really rural residential. Because that is a lot more yellow on that map than we saw the other night.
And I'll add something to the lot more yellow that's on here. I marked every lot that was 8-1, less than 30 acres. The white that you see is everything that's more than 30 acres plus commercial churches, things like that, that we know would not be divided up. And then, of course, you've got your residential that's on here, and which is the pink, and the green that is the resort. And going through this exercise over the last week, and clicking on 20,000 crosses and seeing people's, you know, all that's out there, it's very interesting that out of a lot of the yellow, I would say about probably a third of the yellow that I added, they're on private easies. They're not going to get split anymore, unless it's a division to meet family, short acres. And then you've got some others like that. About a third, about a third of it was that way. But about two-thirds was, yes, it could be divided down. And so the scenario that we had was, again, if you had six acres, you could divide it into thirds, no less than a 10, or two, it would be two to two. Or if you've got 10 acres, it'd be three point three, three point three, three point three. What you're suggesting is, let's go to halves. And I've got to think about that. One of the reasons we get the thirds is because if you had anything that was 30 acres or less, you'd have the 10, 10, 10. That was the reason we went with the third. So if we were doing half, and you just had a 20-acre lot, you could go in and color all the 20-acre lots with this, which we changed the map up a little bit, but not so much. Again, it's just representation. Let's try to remember that what we're working with here is a living and breathing document that can be modified in the future if we need to. But right now, we're trying to strive toward the goal, to get something in place, to then begin, if it needs to be better, go better. I think we've got a pretty good document in place. I really do. We didn't keep battling back and forth on this 10-acre deal. Do we want 10? Do we want two? Do we want five? Do we want six? Do we want seven? Whatever we want. And then it's y'all's decision.
If all of this yellow were to be divided into 10, I mean, into two acre parts, which you'd all, if it's anything above 200, then all of that yellow would turn pink.
Not actually.
It'd still be A.
It's still, but you've got to remember, minor subdivisions, three lots or less. So as soon as you hit the fourth lot, you become a major. So then, you would need to go through the process to get a result. At the same time, if you have 10 acres, and you say, well, and you go to halves, well, I get 5 acres for 5 acres. Nothing, again, can ever get, well, I've done two splits, and I'm out. That's as much as I can go with this property. But if I have, let's say I have 50 acres, and we go to the, either thirds or halves, whichever one we go to, you're locked in at that point. And if you ever come back within the two, and the two years goes away, if I ever deem that you're dividing this property up to make a major separation, it locks down and you go through the process of curating.
Well, sometimes it's divided and built on over time, and you don't realize it until it's, you know, on the road one day.
But we've got a pretty good handle on it now. In the past, that wasn't the way.
So we're still talking about the 10 acres?
Well, that's what we needed to start.
That's mine. What are we talking about?
Are we talking about a 10-acre rule? Or are we just going to talk about if you have, if we go through the scenario of the halves or the thirds that we've already talked about?
Well, I agree with the 10-acre rule for anything over 10 acres, or 30 acres, or whatever we decide that number is. But for these, I could go with a half. Because if not, these can't be divided.
Correct.
So that would give options to the individuals who came before us and said, we have smaller, and we might want to divide. So then you have an option. You have less than 10 acres, it's ag, you can divide, but you can only divide it half.
So you need to...
We could do thirds and leave it locked off proposed, and in six months, look at the data and see what's going on.
I know that most everybody that watches the news and the stats and the market, and correct me if I'm wrong, the market is resetting itself. There've been 25 billion permits in the last year.
Yeah, 12, 11, 13, 14. It's taken care of when we're trying to slow down. Or what's being proposed. What we're trying to do, the reason we proposed the third, was to help these citizens up here that have inherited family land. They want to know what they can do with it. That's where we came up with the idea of working something out that would assist them in being able to do it.
And the high-putt system also.
The high-putt system as well, but not as much. But again, if it's family members, which we've increased that definition as well, that's going to help them out tremendously anyway. And so if you think about it, right now, we have a five-acre minimum on divisions to meet family. We're proposing that they go to three. But yet, you're going to let somebody take a four-acre lot and 8-1, split it in two, and make it two.
Well, if it went to thirds, they couldn't do it because they put it down below the thirds.
Correct.
These are the changes that we have, there's four articles, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Those are the only changes that...
Those will be applied to the existing, the document that's out there on the website. Yes, ma'am.
So these are the only, are there required to be with issues?
The issues, I did get them home to the Help Department about, I talked to her today. We are going to treat that as an in-house...
As a B.
Yeah. We're just going to take care of that with the water for...
For the venues.
For specialty event facilities. Yes, ma'am. And so that's how we'll handle that. And she's going to come by next week, and simply me and Julie, we're going to come with some burgers on that. Whether if they have, she even brought up a different scenario I've not told you about, which was, sometimes EPD may be okay with it, they may not be. It just, there's a lot more that has to be involved. If you're not on, if you're on county water, it doesn't matter. If you're not on county water, you know it well, then that question will arise.
But the 10-acre minimum on anything over, if we go with this, over 30 would still be...
You're not a good one.
Well, the 10-acre minimum still work with 30.
Still what?
10, 10, 10.
Correct.
So the only thing that wouldn't be on the 10-acre rule would be in ag, would be these lots that we are looking at.
And I will...
If you go below 10 acres.
I'll say this too, about a bunch more of it, I won't say probably a third, but a good, a good quarter of it is already family land that's been split up. And you can just see the pockets all over the place. And you also have to remember this. Randy's pointed this out many times, that he built where? He built in the subdivision because he wanted what? He wanted internet connection. He wanted, he wanted the availability to have the life that he lives where he lives. A lot of these places don't have any of that. You don't have county water, you're going to have, you're going to be on separate for sure, and you're probably not going to have good internet. Because a lot of these are remote areas.
And no current cover.
And no current cover. But a lot of it was this area, the most increased area was right in the area of, of...
Yeah, Puma Valley.
Very little down in the Elders Lee, Wayman Hall District.
It's all pink already.
And there was a few hallmarks over here, but not much. I thought it would change a lot more than what I saw once I started digging in, but based on this diagram, when you think a 30-acre lot should be this big, and it's not, it's small. So it came out a lot different than I expected.
Any other questions?
I make a motion that we approve the UDC document that we had on the table with the changes that are indicated in this memorandum, Article 2, Article 5, Article 11.
With no changes.
With no changes, but with data coming back to us in six months about any changes that affect the...
Speaking of that, Commissioner Andrews, let me preface that. We're only, the Board's only approving to send the document, the, to prepare the application and send it back to the Planning Commission for recommendation. We're not approving anything tonight.
Okay, that's...
We're making a distinction.
Yes, we are restarting the process, is what we're doing. With the...
With these change, with these proposed changes to the original document.
Which gives us way to have the two public meetings.
Which will give way to have two public hearings, one for the Planning Commission on October 19th, and the next one November 1st, for the Board of Commissioners, and then the Board, at that time, will be voting on it for consideration.
Yes.
The original document that was denied, plus these changes, and whatever the Planning Commission recommends.
You want to maybe come up with something different? Or just have to say, and add Article 13?
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Motion I second. All those who vote for it. All those opposed, motion carries.
I want to preface what you said about the six months. I want y'all to really look into us getting a GIS person, not in my apartment. Randy and I talked about this. I don't have room over there, but we do need a GIS system that would put something like this out in a matter of...
Right. I agree. That would help the county services as well.
It would help them out more than that. My, my thing in the whole GIS system is just zoning. Everybody else would benefit from it much more than us. Tax accessories, safety, you know, all those guys.
And just to clarify, what I, Dana, I like in six months is, any lots that have those lots, those yellow lots, that you divide, come and give us the yellow lots of this.
Those don't have already happened. Because they, you heard this was coming last year, and I had a full rush on last November December.
And that's what's going to happen, they're going to buy up these smaller lots, and it will start to fire, and then it's going to turn pink. and then we'll start buying them, and it's going to turn pink. But this will slow it down some.
Okay.
And speaking on that GIS, since we're on that topic, Randy, can we add to our discussion maybe for the other three months?
Sure.
Thanks, Eric.
The next item margin this evening was a public hearing. I think that public hearing has been pulled from our, is that right?
She has withdrawn her application for resigning.
Okay. Thank you.
But you still have to act, don't you?
We still have to act.
Okay. All right.
Now my motion will be accepted from the board.
Okay. We have a motion, is there a second? All those opposed?
Any conditions?
Some reductions? Okay.
Motion carries. That takes us to our project updates this evening, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, a quick update of what the county's working on currently. Number one, updating the website, that is ongoing. The new website is up, but a lot more content and work is being done on a daily basis to get that where it used to be. Number four, the UDC, again, that was announced and generated for the consideration, and everybody knows the results of that. Continue the process. Number six, the new EMS voluntary fire development facility in West Point at the North West Harris Business Park. That construction should start really soon. Again, hitting the high points, number 24 and 25 playgrounds at Mulgrew Park and the community center. The RFP was open, and we are reviewing three responses and more consideration next meeting on September 28th. And number 26, the dehumanification system of the community center that is on bid, bid opening is September 22nd. Number 31, Ellison Park, future development, that's going on, and our in-house crew by facility maintenance is beginning to build the new pavilion with restrooms. So that is coming out of ground. And the new playgrounds also. Number 37, Phase 5 of the Meadow Road Trail, ribbon cutting is set for mid-October. Even though it's fully paved, people are using it, the guard rail will still be installed along with various crosswalks. So that project is not quite finished. Ribbon cutting is sometime in mid-October. The next phase of the Meadow Road Trail, Phase 6, that should be done out during fall of this year, and it can be completed in about a year from now. Number 45, the update of the 2017 Tucson evaluation of the 911 radio system. I gave the Board a copy of that report that was, that came in today. So the Board has that 100-plus-page report of Tucson's update of the 27 report on the 911 radio system. A lot of good reading in there, and Tucson will be at the next Commission meeting on September 20th to give a presentation and answer questions to the Concerned.
During that presentation, do we know if they're going to give us a comparison between the first survey and the second?
Yes, we have that down.
Okay.
Number 47, rejuvenate Air Force apron and taxiways, that project is almost completed. Number 56, a replacement waterworks administration building that is coming out of ground now, be finished in early 2023. Number 58, Hallyford Waterline, Phase 2, that's on bid, bid opening is October 6th, with more consideration in the second meeting in October. Number 59, the US-27 water line upgrade, that's about 25,000 linear feet of water line. So we are going out for bid in October, more consideration of bid in November, delivery of all materials in October of 2023. There's about a year lead time for water pipes. The project will start next summer, we'll start laying our pipes in the fall. So long lead items, I'm afraid. And that's all being paid by a GFO loan. Number 60, Phase 1 of the renovations of Corvus is plus NAPF funds and ARP funds. The project is scheduled to start October 3rd, to be exact. So the courthouse renovation will begin October 3rd. There's going to be staffing, a lot of manpower, a lot of materials, a lot of noise. And we're in coordination with the people that work in the courthouse. So they will soon know it begins October 3rd, and it will be, the schedule says October 3rd, and it's going to end next summer. Again, that's roof replacements, HVAC replacements, store windows, and a lot of paint on the exterior and repairing the balcony. So October 3rd of this year to next summer of 2023. And number 70, realign Mount Hill Road near Stodoff Roofing Team, that realignment is being designed, surveyed right now. So basically, that's the, a quick overview of the projects the county's working on right now. If you happen to answer any questions, the Board may have.
Any questions from the Board?
We're still waiting on response from the other cities, from the cities of Southern Lake.
Yes, we have heard nothing back from the cities. What we know is what we read in the newspaper.
So officially, we've received that?
No.
What is the headline again?
December 31st of this year, before we have to get out of here.
Sir Randy, may I...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Can y'all hear me okay?
Okay.
So with regards to my ongoing discussions, I have reached out to Robert Watkins Jr. on multiple occasions, and left messages for him with his office. I have not heard back since he responded to us a few weeks ago, saying that they agreed to the macro breakdown of the percentage, and he would get back to me within the week on the breakdown for the cities. And otherwise, he gave me dates in October, and for some reason, we couldn't come to an overall agreement for a mediation. But it's my hope that I will soon hear from him, and we will have confirmation that all the cities have agreed, and we can then sign the needed certificate in the coming years.
Any other questions, Mr. Board? If nothing else, then we'll move on to our next item this evening, which is a resolution dealing with PDs, a prior moratorium to our acceptance of the zoning applications for planned unit development. PD expired in December of 2021. The county is still undergoing significant provisions of zoning ordinances, ordinances, and other land use ordinances, and the Board has expressed as I've had desire to consider another moratorium on application for planned unit developments. Motion to vote or needed to approve the resolution establishing a moratorium on the acceptance of any applications related to planned unit developments. And, as you heard, our attorney is on the phone this evening, so if anybody has any questions, put the attorney.
I do. So Russell, as far as the moratorium itself, I know we already put a timeline on that, does that extend to completion of the UDC and once it's voted and implemented?
Commissioner, yes. The timeline in this moratorium is for 180 days, which would include that timeline for the UDC. But of course, the Board could certainly make it for a shorter period, for a longer period. But I would say that 180 days is a good medium, although there's no bright line test for how long a moratorium can go. There is case law out there suggesting that 180 days is acceptable, and when you're dealing with an act like this, where it affects all property owners and not just a specific property owner, it's a legislative act that is protected and doesn't violate procedural due process rights. So I hope that answers your question. If not, I can certainly clarify.
It does?
Okay.
So next March 5th?
This, this 180 days goes out to March 5th, 2023, correct?
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I want to make a motion to approve the resolution establishing a moratorium on the acceptance of any application related to planned unit developments for the 100-day period, which would put us to March 5th, 2023.
Okay. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second? All those opposed? Motion carries. I had to wrap some remaining this evening, if there's no need for a second session, I don't think there is.
Sorry? Was there a...
No, no, there is not, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to adjourn? All those opposed? Motion carries.